Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Beth, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, Eileen, I haven't heard of anybody aside from Craig, who I know had a conflict this evening, that they were not going to be able to attend. Did you hear from anybody else?
I did not, no.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi Susan, good evening.
Beth, it's, I just got a text from Beth McManus saying she's having difficulty connecting.
Okay.
So, I don't know if Eileen can help out there.
She's having difficulty, I guess, with internet on her end or with using something like...
She says it just keeps spinning saying connecting, but I guess it's not connecting.
Yeah, I don't think that's anything I could fix on my end.
Okay.
Oh, she just said she got it, so she should be on.
Excellent, thank you. I guess done. I see, it looks like Sujatha is also in the attendee list. And I don't know if Deborah Neves has arrived yet. Don't see her. Sujatha, we see you, but I think you're muted, so I can't hear if you're saying something. Good evening. Okay, is there anybody besides Deborah, Eileen, that we would be waiting on at this point?
No, no one else.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that said, yep, I'm gonna go ahead and unread us in, give me just a moment. Okay. "In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall, posting on the Melbourne Township website, posting on the main door, Melbourne Town Hall, and the mailing to the item and the Star Ledger, which publications are the officially designated newspapers for the township of Melbourne, notice indicating that this special meeting would take place on Wednesday, July 20, 2022, at 7:30 PM via the Zoom webinar. Due to the COVID-19 virus and mandatory quarantines imposed under executive orders by Governor Philip Murphy, Melbourne Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting." Roll call.
Guests on Halpert?
Here.
Maggie Miggins?
Here.
Sujath Ashan?
Here.
Diane Egglo?
Here.
Vinnie Vijay?
Here.
Allison Canfield?
Here.
Vice Chair Daniel Baer?
Here.
Chair Beth Saul?
Here. Thank you. Welcome to our Planning Board members, as well as community members in attendance this evening. I'm gonna explain the format of the meeting, so that everybody understands what to expect for tonight. We're gonna begin tonight's hearing with a presentation of the Amendment to the Master Plan on the Adoption of the Third Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. Following the brief presentation, Planning Board members will be asked, will be able to ask any questions that they have regarding the Master Plan element. Following Planning Board member questions, we will have our public hearing portion of the meeting. Because we want to allow for all members of the public who wish to provide public comment this evening, we will limit speakers to three minutes. You can use the raise hand function in Zoom, and then you'll be brought in as a panelist. And we'll ask that you both turn on the video and unmute yourself, and you'll be sworn in. At that point, we will begin your three minutes, and I'll just give you a 15-second warning as your time's approaching, so you can conclude your thought. At that point, we will have you muted and return as an attendee. During the time that everybody's speaking, we, I request no personal attacks on our professionals, any elected officials, or Planning Board members. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. So this is serving as the warning, and if any comments are made attacking individuals, you'll be directly muted and removed as a panelist from the meeting. And a reminder that tonight, we will only be discussing the Master Plan Amendment. Because you'll be providing sworn testimony, we're not permitting anyone to read comments from others into the record. And this applies to members of the public, as well as our own Planning Board members. We will allow all commenters, or those asking questions, to ask upfront, in succession, to be sure that we have time to allow everybody to ask their questions and be heard. And the only time we may interject, or choose to interject at the end of your three minutes, is if a fact is misstated, and we just want to provide a clarification for the record. At the conclusion of all public comments, our professionals will address the questions that we have heard. I will be taking notes, and other, and other professionals will also be taking notes to make sure we capture all questions that are asked to provide responses. And just a final note, an FAQ page has been created on the town website regarding affordable housing. Our township has held multiple meetings, providing additional context and items surrounding the affordable housing debate. There was a meeting offering discussion of environmental concerns at development sites. There have also been TC meetings to introduce and adopt ordinances in compliance with the settlement agreement. We're not here to discuss any of those items, or why the settlement agreement was adopted by our elected officials. We're here tonight to review the Master Plan element. And so with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Beth McManus for her presentation, and then following that, we will have Planning Board questions.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but before we have Ms. McManus' Baker presentation, I just wanted to confirm with the Board Secretary that notice, as required under the statute, for a public hearing on a Master Plan Amendment has in fact been provided through publication, through sending notice to the County Planning Board, to the Office of Planning Advocacy, and then any other items that you may have done. Can you just place on the record?
Yes, that has been done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Also, just to correct, Deborah Neves has joined the meeting. She was absent from the office. So Deborah's here.
Thank you for clarifying for the record. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Beth, over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So I'm gonna share my screen in just a moment to go through a relatively brief presentation about the housing plan. And the housing plan that is before all of you this evening has a date of July 8 on it. And the plan is largely similar to that which was previously shared with the Planning Board during the prior public hearing. However, there are a handful of points of clarification that have been added or amended to the housing plan since then. But I want to be clear, there are no new sites or strategies and no changes to the obligation. And so many of the changes you see here are intended to provide some clarification about the various strategies. But with that, let me go through and provide an overview of what you see in this housing plan. And so if I can share my screen, yes, great. There we go. So, let's see. Okay, so first and foremost, our housing plan addresses the three components of our affordable housing obligation. The first component is, of course, the rehabilitation obligation, and that obligation is set at 109 units. The rehabilitation obligation represents an estimate of the number of substandard units existing in Melbourne that are also occupied by low and moderate income households. So it's an estimate that's based on large data sources, such as the census or the American Community Survey, indicating that number of households that, as I said, are in the, the housing units are substandard, and the households occupying them are low and moderate income households. The second component of the obligation is the prior round obligation, and this is 261 units. And then we also have the third round obligation at 1,115 units. And so these two components, the prior round and the third round obligation, are what's referred to as the new construction obligation differentiated from the rehabilitation obligation. And this is generally, although not, it's not a literal definition, but generally referred to as the number of new housing, affordable housing units that must be provided in the community. And so I'll address each one, each component of these obligations, beginning with the rehabilitation obligation. This, this component of Melbourne's obligation is satisfied in a relatively simple and straightforward manner in the sense that, first, we're going to continue our participation in the Essex County Housing Rehabilitation Program. Second, the municipality will create a complementary municipal rehabilitation program. And that's necessary because Essex County Programs, Essex County Program for Rehabilitation, just like every other county program, is only open to owner-occupied units. However, the rehabilitation program, or the manner in which the town meets the rehabilitation obligation, must be available to renter-occupied households. And so what we're doing here in Melbourne is, is actually the same as what's done in just about every other community with a rehabilitation obligation is, which is participation in the county program first, but then also creating that complementary program that is available only to renter-occupied households. And so through these two programs, and making those programs available to any eligible households, Melbourne will have met this first component of its obligation, the rehabilitation obligation. So for the prior round and the third round obligation at 261 and 1,115 units respectively, those two obligations are just simply too large for a built-out community like Melbourne. And that's okay, because COA's rules specifically anticipate such a circumstance, and that's why we have a process set forth in those rules referred to as the vacant land adjustment. And what it permits is a downward adjustment of the municipality's obligation. Here, it's a downward adjustment of the combined prior round and third round obligations to a number that represents the vacant and developable lands in the community. Now, this is an academic exercise, and it's, I would say, informed by case law as well as COA's rules. And so Melbourne has performed this vacant land adjustment, and it generally includes properties that are undeveloped, but also properties that are going to be developed with units that will help meet, or meet a portion of that third round obligation, of that third round RDP. And I'll review that in just a moment. I do want to be clear, though, that the vacant land adjustment, this is, this is a part of our housing program of compliance, our housing compliance program, that was determined at the time of the settlement agreement and was approved by the court via the fairness, via the fairness hearing. So while vacant land adjustment is typically a, under prior years, when we weren't working with the courts, it was sort of a primary component or primary point of interest in a housing plan. Here in Melbourne, and every other community that's gone through the vacant land adjustment, it's simply, the housing plan simply reflects that which was determined by the settlement agreement and that which was approved at their fairness hearing. And so, and that's exactly what we've done here in Melbourne. So we have this downward adjusted obligation of that combined prior round and third round obligation, and that's referred to as the RDP, the realistic, realistic development potential. And then the difference between that RDP and the total obligation is simply referred to as the unmet need. The unmet need is not an obligation that must be completely fulfilled with affordable housing units, nor is it expected to be completely fulfilled. Instead, a municipality is obligated to create affordable housing mechanisms, inclusionary housing, or perhaps other mechanisms like we have here in Melbourne, that reflect the opportunities for, for future construction of affordable housing should redevelopment occur. And so it's a bit of a softer or more subjective obligation, but similar to the RDP, these are also components that were determined as part of our settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, and that were subject to the fairness hearing that we had in earlier 2022. And so the result of going through this exercise is that RDP that I described, and it is 114 units. That remaining obligation is, is our unmet need. And so in terms of discussing the strategies, let's talk about how it is that Melbourne will meet the 114-unit RDP. And so this first slide is intended to just remind folks of where the affordable housing sites are in the township, and included on this map are not just the RDP mechanisms that I'm about to go through, but also many of the unmet need mechanisms, and you'll see this map again. In this table, this is an overview of how we're meeting the, the RDP, and I'll go through the sites in just a moment. But first and foremost, I think what we can see is that the top four rows are inclusionary housing developments. And I think what's important to see here is that all of them are family rental units, and also that we have generated 29 bonus credits for the Upton. And 29 might seem to be a bit of a random number, but I will inform the board that that is, that represents the maximum number of bonus credits that Melbourne is eligible for. And so first and foremost, in terms of satisfying our obligation, we made sure to maximize our bonus credits. So we have the Upton, the Silverman Group, the Wells Fargo, and then 249 Melbourne Avenue, also referred to, as Annie says, as new or new-ish, in the case of the Upton, inclusionary housing projects that will meet a portion of our RDP. And I'll go through each of these sites in just a moment. The last thing I want to point out on this table are two group homes for adults with developmental disabilities that are located here in Melbourne Township. I will not, I won't go through these in detail, except to state here that group homes, provided they meet certain conditions, are actually eligible for credit against a municipality's obligation. And that's what we have here. We have a total of five bedrooms that are eligible for credit. And in the case of group homes, unlike inclusionary housing developments, it is the bedrooms that are eligible for credit. And so we have five here. And so if we take a look at the sites, I'm gonna start with the Upton, also referred to as Canoe Brook. You can see it's highlighted on, on this slide here, and it's just on the south side of JFK Parkway at the northern portion of Melbourne Township. Specifically, it's 150 JFK Parkway, block 5303, lots 1, 3, and 4. It's about three and a half acres, and it's been approved, and it's, and the construction is, I believe it's actually complete now. It's a total of 200 housing units, of which 30 are affordable. We also have a hotel and some office space on the property as well. But as I said at the outset with that table, we're generating not just the 30 credits for each affordability on the site, but also 29 bonus credits for this. Our next property, meeting a portion of the RDP, is referred to as the Silverman Group or the 85 Woodland Avenue property. This is, as you can see shown on the map, this is at the intersection of Chatham Road and Woodland Avenue. It's block 1904, lots 72 through 75. And this one and a half acre property is actually already subject to site plan approval. And so this site is probably familiar to many of you Planning Board members, having gone through the approval process. And I think something else that's noteworthy about this property is this site came to be through builder's remedy litigation. And so this is, this is a site that really, I would say, sort of kicked off this process in the sense that the municipality was unprotected from builder's remedy litigation. This property owner took advantage of that circumstance and filed a builder's remedy lawsuit. They were obviously successful, and through that litigation, the approval that resulted was for 62 total units, including 12 affordability units, as well as a small amount, 10,000 square feet of medical office space. Our next property is referred to as the Wells Fargo site in the housing plan, and this is, as you can see on the slide here, has three frontages. And so it's located at the intersections of Essex Street, Douglas Street, and Melbourne Avenue. It's block 1211, lots 1 and 7. And this one and a half acre property was granted site plan approval in February 2021. The site was then approved for a total of 53 units, including eight affordable housing units, as well as 3,000 square foot of retail space. The next site fulfilling the RDP is, is the Annie Says property, also 249 Melbourne Avenue. This site, which is block 705, lot 1, is a little over two acres. This site is, has not yet been subject to a site plan approval, but is specifically addressed in our settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, as well as, of course, the housing plan. The site is planned and now zoned for 150 total housing units, including 30 affordable units. And so with that site, that includes an overview of all of the properties that will meet our 114-unit RDP. It's those four inclusionary housing sites I just reviewed, plus the two group homes, plus the 29 bonus credits from the Canoe Brook or the Upton property. And so with that, let's talk about the next component of how the township satisfies its obligation, and that is, of course, the unmet need mechanisms. And so we come back to this map, just to highlight again some of the locations of these unmet need mechanisms. You can see them, in fact, highlighted in this pink or purple color throughout the, shown throughout the township. And so let's first start with the Nine Main Street property. This is, of course, block 1207, lots 7 and 9. It's about a four and a half acre property, of which about 1.8 acres will be subject to the affordable housing development. This, and I will say that 1.8 acres will be located approximate to the Main Street frontage, which is on the right side of the screen here. I realize now I don't have a road name for it, as opposed to towards the, towards the tail end of the site, if you will. This site, as I said, will be 100% affordable housing, and it will be developed with 75 affordable housing units. The lot is currently owned by the municipality, and we've actually gone through the process already to select a developer for the property. That developer selected is the RPM Development Company. Those folks are currently working with the municipality in an effort to put together an agreement put together an agreement that would provide for the terms of of the development and the terms for the development process. And it's further expected that RPM will take ownership of the property so that they may own the affordable housing development that they will build. Additionally, RPM will be going through through a funding process to receive outside sources of funding. The settlement agreement had anticipated 9% tax credits, but there's also some additional or new funding sources that have become available that we know that the developer is looking for. And but regardless of the specific funding source, whether it's 9% tax credits or perhaps 4% tax credits or another source, it is expected, it is required that RPM go out and and seek those outside sources of funding for the construction cost of the project, although it is likely that Milburn will be required to provide a development subsidy for the site as well, which is typical for just about any 100% affordable housing site in the state. And this property in the housing plan is subject to, I would say, one of the more significant changes that you see in the July 8th housing plan as compared to the the June 2022 housing plan. I know one of the concerns that have been expressed in the past is about the existing contamination on the property. The site has a history of industrial use. It's also, as many know already, currently used as the township's DPW facility. And so there was an understanding that there was, that there may, a minimum may have been contamination on the property. And to that effort, or to that, for that reason, there was a preliminary assessment report completed in 2021 that provided a review of the site's history and provided some testing of the property and what it determined in the, in a future site investigation report completed in April 2022, was that there are four areas of concern that warranted further investigation. What you can find in the housing plan is an excerpt of the conclusion from that report where it provides an overview of those four areas of concern. It goes on to, the housing plan itself goes on to state that while the site's current and historic uses did indeed result in contamination, there's no information to suggest the site cannot be remediated to the applicable standards for residential development. And in fact, the site will need to be, will be required to be remediated to residential development standards prior to occupancy by any resident of the site. That's understood by RPM, by the developer. And it certainly will be required as part of any agreement that the municipality enters into. And so with that, this is your first, and I would say perhaps the most prominent unmet need mechanism in and it will result in 75 affordable units. Next, in terms of our unmet need mechanisms, is the Woodmont Properties site. This is block 5302, lot five. It's a 25 acre property. However, it's only five to six acres that will be that are subject to the development that I'm about to describe. Woodmont is, this site is specifically addressed in our settlement agreements with Fair Share Housing Center, as well as, of course, the the housing plan. The site is anticipated for development of 195 units, including 39 affordable housing units. However, there's a very unique circumstance with this property in that the site is must go through an approval process through the Watership Properties Review Board. Property is currently owned by American Water. It's associated with open spacelands that are related to the reservoir. You can actually see the reservoir shown at the top of this slide. And so because, because of that, because of the site's status and association with reservoirs, with drinking water, they're required to go through this approval process to to seek approval from not only the Watership Properties Review Board, but also the New Jersey BPU. An approval that allows for the site to no longer be used as open space and actually to be developed. The developer must go through this process. And in fact, the zoning that permits that 195 units is contingent, is conditioned upon those approvals being granted. And so if and when those approvals are granted, the zoning will go into effect. Should the approvals never be granted, the zoning will not go into effect. The next property is this, and I should note, I want to be clear, on the Woodmont property, that ordinance was already adopted. Our next unmet need zone is the C Zone, also referred to as Canoe Brook Country Club. This is an overlay zone and this starts the first overlay zone that will be used to to meet the unmet need. This first one requires a density of eight dwelling units an acre and a 20% set aside. And just for for the record, an overlay zone, and for anybody that's unclear, an overlay zone constitutes a development option. And so it would allow for the existing base zoning, the existing C zone to remain in place and to remain in effect. However, it gives an option to the property owner to utilize the the inclusionary housing overlay zone for for redevelopment of the site, should they want to. It is not a requirement that they utilize the overlay zoning. It simply sits there as an option to the property owner, should they decide to change the site's use. Our next unmet need mechanism is the B2 Zone along Morris Turnpike. As I said before, this is, this is an overlay zoning zone. And so that means that the existing this is required to be an overlay zone. In in fact, though, what we have are some zoning changes that would create two distinct zone districts in this area for the for the B2 district. It's going to be the B2A and the B2B district. And I believe that this zoning ordinance was actually adopted just last night. This provides for a density of 18 dwelling units an acre and a 20% set aside. Next, we have what was referred to as the B2 Zone previously. This will, this also subject to an ordinance that was adopted just last night. This is now turning into the B2C district. And this, this new zone will permit a total of 40 dwelling units an acre with a 20% set aside. Next, we have the B4 District, which is essentially the township's downtown area. This is in the B4 District and the zoning here will permit a total of 25 dwelling units an acre with a 20% set aside for affordable housing. Next, we have the CMO District in the southern part of the municipality. This is additional zone change that will permit a total of 18 dwelling units an acre with a 20% set aside. And this too was adopted just last night. And then, last but not least, we have the the OR1 zoning strategy. This is specific to block 5302, lot one along the north side of JFK Parkway. In this area will permit a density of 20 units an acre with a 20% set aside. And so those are the site-specific unmet need mechanisms, the the couple of different sites, like the Nine Main Street site, plus the the Woodmont property, as well as the other zoning mechanisms that have been largely adopted already, excluding the Country Club site. The last unmet need mechanism that that Milburn is required to adopt, and this is a mechanism that just about will all vacant land communities have adopted, as well as a number of non-vacant land communities. And that's referred to as a mandatory set-aside ordinance. This is an ordinance that simply requires the the addition or the inclusion of an affordable housing set-aside where certain approvals occur. So those approvals include D1 use variance, a D5 density variance, as well as a rezoning to, for another property, not listed or not discussed today, for multifamily or for attached housing. Or lastly, a redevelopment plan that would include multifamily or attached housing. It simply requires that where one of these approvals are granted, that an affordable housing set-aside of 20% be required. I should also note that you have to have five or more units in order for this ordinance to be triggered. But where there's five or more units and one of these approvals are put in place, a 20% set-aside must be imposed. The mandatory set-aside ordinance does not require that the township or perhaps the zoning board issue that approval. It doesn't change the criteria that must be met. It just simply states if and when such an approval is granted, it must include a 20% set-aside. And so that's the the last unmet need mechanism. And so what I've done this evening is I've gone through your RDP, your obligation first, your RDP mechanisms, those four inclusionary sites, plus the group homes, and then the variety of unmet need mechanisms that include the Nine Main, the Woodmont, and the additional five zoning strategies that I described. And so with that, that's really an overview of the township's plan. As I said at the outset, this housing element before you this evening is very similar to that which was provided in June, but there have been a number of clarifications added to the plan. And so with that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Hey, thank you. Any questions from members of the board for Ms. McMenness?
I'll ask a question.
Okay.
How were these densities crafted? Who who figured these out and how were they decided? Because as we heard at last night's township committee meeting, there was a lot of concern about the disparity amongst the township.
So all of these densities were crafted during the time of settlement with Fair Share Housing Center, so done at the end of the second half, at least, of 2021. And it was done based on a negotiation in order to achieve settlements.
And who was responsible for negotiating these these densities? Let me finish. Who decided that the B2 Zone should be divided into three separate zones? And who decided that one portion, B2C, is 40 units per acre, while the CMO is 18 and Canoe Brook is only eight? You know, how was all this actually decided? By whom? And what was the rationale that came up with these exact numbers? Thank you.
So as previously discussed at earlier meetings, I led the township's negotiations with Fair Share Housing Center beginning in late July of 2021. There were certainly negotiations that took place prior, but I can't comment on those. So I did lead those discussions, but I can't say that there was any particular person that decided each density since, since this was a negotiation with Fair Share Housing Center. And so in terms of rationale, the municipality, as has been previously stated, sought to reduce impact on its residential neighbors where possible, and it sought to keep densities as low as possible, given the circumstances and the challenge facing the municipality.
Okay, so there's a subcommittee that had two township committee members on it and yourself. Who were the people representing Fair Share Housing at those subcommittee meetings?
I don't know that Fair Share attended any subcommittee meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you just said these numbers were based on Fair Share Housing negotiations. I'm just so we provided the numbers to Fair Share Housing?
No, what I'm saying is I don't think that, I don't recall Fair Share Housing Center attending a subcommittee meeting.
So the subcommittee came up with the numbers and presented them to, I I think, because the, you know, the residents, or a lot of residents are still coming in new to this and don't really understand how any of this happened. So the subcommittee, with your guidance, came up with these density numbers and then you presented them to Fair Share Housing and Fair Share Housing said, yes, we like them? Or did they give you different numbers and you came back with higher, lower, like, you know, the negotiations are, here's some, here's some, and we decide on something in the middle? Is that how it happened?
No, I can't, you know, I think as, I'm sorry.
In your answer, we don't disclose things we're not supposed to disclose as a, as a result of the details of the negotiation. So please.
Yeah, thank you. What I was about to say is I really can't, I can't describe what each party said. It's just simply not something that I can discuss publicly. And frankly, I'm also not I guess I don't have the back and forth in my notes right now. So I'm not sure I could, I could share that level of detail. But the the nature of this negotiation, just like, just about every other negotiation across the state, is that Fair Share Housing Center is simply looking for as much affordable housing as it thinks, as it thinks might be, might be appropriate in the community in Milburn Township. And so in terms of when we talk about as much affordable housing, when we're talking about unmet need mechanisms, what we're really talking about is density. And so the municipality.
Sorry, I'm just going to jump in and just remind, just to make sure it's clear for the record and for you too, Diane. This was this is the negotiation between the township committee members who've served on the subcommittee and other parties not involving the planning board at that time. So we are that's regarding the the settlement agreement. I understand you have some questions that are based on it, but we are not discussing the terms on which the settlement agreement happened, but we can talk about any questions you have about the element, of course.
Okay, so I guess then the bottom line is, my question is actually referring to the density numbers. How 40 got at one place, eight got at one place, 18 at one? You know, there's a, there's a discrepancy. And I think that is what the community is seeing. That was what I'm seeing after this all came to light. So I'm not going to take up all your time, because I see that there's no clear answer, except the disparity and was provided this way. And it's just said that there's no clear answer on how we got what we got. And we'll never seem to know.
Okay. Do you have additional questions? Okay, Asu Jath, I see you have your hand raised.
Thank you. So I understand we meet our RDP. Now, the unmet need potential, what is our obligation to meet that?
Okay, so the unmet need does not require that we provide zoning adequate to meet the entire unmet need. Our unmet need obligation is as described by me tonight and as described in the housing element in the sense that Milburn satisfies its unmet need through a variety of through the variety of zoning mechanisms that have been described. So it's things like the, like the CMO District or the the B2 District, as well as the Nine Main site and the Woodmont Property site. So it's, the unmet need is typically satisfied by creating opportunities for redevelopment that would include affordable housing on sites that may become available. And so I know that that is very much not a black and white standard. It's not a bright line standard that we could point to. That would frankly make my job a lot easier and make a lot of people's jobs a lot easier. Instead, the, you know, what's an adequate unmet need program is really municipality-specific and based on the conditions of that particular town. And so I say all of that just to to highlight the fact that our settlement agreement and now our housing plan is based upon those negotiations with Fair Share Housing Center, where they sought to identify all every possible redevelopment opportunity in the municipality that they felt would provide some affordable housing.
Okay, so the unmet need obligation doesn't tire us to say it covers 25% or 15%. It's whatever we identified as an opportunity.
It's whatever is negotiated as an opportunity. But yes, there's no, no specific percentage that needs to be satisfied.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
I do have another question.
Sure.
What happens if up on JFK, Woodmont does not get DEP approval? What happens to that obligation of 39 units?
It's not transferred, if that's what you're asking. So a couple of things happen. One, the zoning does not go into effect. And because the zoning does not go affect, go into effect, essentially, that means that that And because the zoning does not go affect, go into effect, essentially, that means that 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 site no longer fulfills a portion of our unmet need mechanism, our settlement agreement, nor does this housing plan require that those units be replaced on any other property in the community.
And lastly, I just, I forgot to ask, when you were not asking for names, did Milburn have their own planner, a township planner in the negotiations?
I'm getting the distinct impression you don't mean me. So I guess
Yes, I don't mean, you're the Fair Share Housing negotiator planner.
No, I mean, I'm your township affordable housing consultant. Graham is your, is now your planning consultant.
Okay, so just, we didn't have Graham then. Okay, just wanted to put that out. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from members of the board? Okay, so if I'm seeing none at this time, we will turn and open it to questions from the public. And again, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. Ed, I just want to confirm, will you be swearing in witnesses as they provide testimony?
Yes, if people are just going to ask questions, then they do not have to be sworn in, but if they are going to make statements, they they will. So that should be the first question, Madam Chair, that you pose to them. And I really don't want to interrupt people if they start switching from questions to testimony. So please, when the chair asks the question, if you think you are going to make a statement, please avoid the need to interrupt you while you're doing what you're doing.
Okay, before we do that, I see Mr. Bear has his hand raised.
Before we ask the public to provide their questions and comments, Ed, could you just, for the record, provide us with a description of the purview of the board this board tonight, what our obligation is?
Yes, as I, as I have stated.
As you have many times, but I think it's important that you provide that information tonight.
I appreciate that and to be clear. The planning board's function tonight is to hold a public hearing on the housing element and fair share plan that is before you that reflects the settlement agreement that the township has entered into with Fair Share Housing Center. The way the process works is that the two documents that is a settlement agreement, if there is a settlement agreement, and the fair share and the housing element fair share plan should mesh. They should, they should sync with each other because the settlement agreement reflects the township committee's determination as to how its affordable housing obligation should be satisfied. And in this case, at this juncture, that settlement agreement has been approved by the court as being fair and reasonable and satisfactory to accommodate the township's affordable housing obligation and its constitutional obligation. And the housing element fair share plan merely mirrors that commitment that the township has made and that the court has approved.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. That said, do any members of the public have questions or want to provide comment? Now is the opportunity to use the raise hand function. Okay, let's just start bringing folks over one at a time. Jeffrey Feld, you should be, you should be joining us, Mr. Feld. Are you able to unmute and
Do you hear me?
We do hear you. Are you asking questions or providing testimony this evening?
I'm an attorney, and the first thing I'm gonna say is how come the rules changed for this hearing than the other hearing that we had on the fair share original one? You just changed the rules tonight. You put a time limitation and swearing in. They are different. I'm an attorney. I don't think I have to be sworn in. I'm just gonna make a few comments on the record.
Let me, let me stop you for a moment. Sorry. Attorneys don't have to be sworn in when they are acting as an attorney for a client. Attorneys never get sworn in in court. You, you are not acting in your capacity as an attorney for someone else. You're acting as an individual resident of the township, just like anybody else. The fact that you happen to be an attorney does not prevent or avoid the need for your testimony to be under oath, like any anyone else's testimony, when you're testifying in that capacity.
All I'm doing is putting comments into public hearing. I'm not testifying. I'm putting comments and questions into the record. Also, by being an attorney, I'm a public citizen. If you want to swear me in, I'll, I put the objection on the record. I'll swear in, swear me in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that any testimony you will give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-evident?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. You may proceed.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Jeffrey Feld. I reside at 11 Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. I just want to put down before we're talking about oats, and we've been hearing about constitutional obligations. We have a constitutional obligation to provide a reasonable opportunity for affordable housing. But you also took an oath to afford the constitutional obligation of citizens of the right to be heard before this whole plan and change of ordinances occurred. I don't think anyone disputes that the final terms of the settlement were not told to the public, that the public was not told of the changes in the overlay zones from 2018, 2000 to July 2021. Earlier this evening, Ms. McManus talked about the art vacant land adjustment. When you compare the report by the special master, he does not go through the methodology. He just says he accepts the methodology used by Fair Share Housing Center. Not the methodology used by Milburn, but the methodology used by Fair Share Housing Center. Based on what occurred in the last night, the last two township committee meetings that lasted to past one o'clock, there's real confusion about what occurred between mid-July into the settlements. There's questions as to the change of the overlays, the change in the densities, the use of the affordable, the project at the DPW, which in June of that year, prior year, the town was told to citizens that nothing would happen at that property without any citizens' input. Again, I too have questions of how the densities were changed. I have questions that we talked about today. You're talking about the environmental as the DPW site. I think last week, I think today, a week ago today, there was a presentation. There's talked about a report. The report's not available to the public. I don't know if the report was shared with the planning board. It was said that a draft report was shared with the township committee, but there's no evidence that this report about what is on the site, because there's a third stage report was ever been shared with the planning board. So I don't know how you get to the point of making a determination about the DPW site. Issues. A second, I talked about the sanctity of your oath. There's issues about the public input. There was none. You're changing the zoning. I think that you have to take into account some of the changes about the overlays. As the last time I was here, I talked about what has to be done to get to the final compliance hearing. And if you look at the the report by the special master, Mr. Banish, the objections regarding whether the citizens needed a right to be heard was reserved to be heard at the final compliance hearing. In addition, when we spoke, we said, what is the checklist? What is the checklist of documents? Because one of the things we're talking about, you approving your fair share settlement, the plan, there's certain things that the special master says had to be included in that plan. Who has taken to see whether all those elements are included in it? Who has compared the format of the special masters of the fiscal the fair share housing plan to what was done in 2008 and to 2021? They don't have the same elements. And the question is, someone has to opine that all the requirements that the special master required as a schedule has been complied by Ms. McManus. I hear my limited time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Perry Urso, you should be in. You should be able to unmute and turn on video. And I just wanted to ask if you're asking questions or providing testimony and comments tonight.
Hi, Perry Urso, 514 Milburn Avenue in Short Hills.
Can I just ask, are you asking questions? Are you providing a commentary, comments and testimony tonight?
Actually, both.
Okay, can we have you sworn in then if you're gonna provide? Great.
Will you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that any testimony you will give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, self-evident?
So help me God, yes.
Thank you. Please put your hand down and proceed.
Thank you. Um, okay, so I'm gonna, can I ask questions first? Or let me, let me just read my statement first.
Sure.
So here you are tonight, after several meetings from June to July 2020. This board said no and originally denied the fair share plan, housing plan, and which I'm assuming for it was inconsistent to the master plan. Then a closed emergency meeting was taken place earlier in July 2020. I ask why? Together, I stand with many members of the public. At the TC meeting held last night on July 19, 2020, where there was a motion to have, with all due respect, Attorney Buzak to be fired. There was a 3-2 vote in favor of Attorney Buzak. Has this attorney or our mayor changed your minds during a closed emergency meeting? And has the planner discussed anything with you during these meetings? I've been asking for months and months why the B3 was exempt from the overlay zones. Ms. McManus, on multiple occasions, responded that she was not at liberty to discuss this matter. Our BA, Alex McDonald, stated the same. And recently, in one meeting, an occasion, Mr. McDonald stated that the B3 was exempt because the property was not deep enough. Last night, nearly midnight, when I repeated the same question with permission during public comment of each of the ordinance, why B3 has been excluded from the overlay ordinance? It wasn't until a member of the public came forward and forced the township to answer my repeated question. Unlike this board, who actually listened and considered to residents and property owners' concerns, they had a majority vote and strategically, all ordinances were approved with a 3-2 vote, except the Canoe Brook ordinance. It was at the request of the mayor and members of the TC that the planner answer my questions. And he went on why B3 was excluded. It was stated last night publicly because it's not in the master plan. And it was confirmed today. So if it is, was that easy to give me an answer? Why was it until last night when I repeatedly asked the same question, even in front of the judge?
15 seconds.
That was the answer. No, I'm not buying it, nor should you. And even members of the TC last night told the public that certain board members are lying. And even the township attorney Brewer made contradictory statements.
Your time.
I also learned last night that in April 2018, housing element fair share.
Ms. Erso, I'm allowing you to wrap up your your sentence.
Yes, I'm almost done. That B3 not only was included, but either was B4 and the OR zones, which I learned last night and this morning from another member that was there.
Okay, I'm having to mute you because you're discussing items that were discussed at the meeting last night and and that is not that, those are ordinances and are not pertinent to the element that that's a separate discussion as we had highlighted. So
No, with all due respect, it is, these ordinance were passed. And each ordinance was passed by a 3-2 vote, and you are here tonight going to be voting on it. And I, we all in the public were lied to that you're giving information. I was given information that these zones were excluded from your overlays because they weren't in the fair share housing plan. But yet, so were the B4 and the OR. So can now, at this point, can we ask Ms. McManus to explain now that I've gotten this much information? And also, is it that Mr.?
Ms. Erso, I'm sorry, we have, we want to allow everybody the three minutes, and you've now used about four. So Eileen, we're gonna have her return to the attending.
Miss, this is way too important for you to not let me finish. I'm sorry.
We gave, we're giving everybody time. It's, I'm not saying, I'm not diminishing your significance or
Will you give me the opportunity to call back? And I want to ask this board, does the township committee or our attorneys, can they have the liberty to go back to Fair Share Housing and say, you know what? My residents, my TC, we are, my planning boards are not comfortable with this plan, and we want to renegotiate.
Do we have your question? We will get to the questions at the end. Thank you. Okay, Eileen, we're gonna bring in our next. Eileen, is it not, somebody's not coming in?
Hold on, someone just missed their hand.
Okay. Okay, somebody named Frank, you are in.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Are you gonna be asking questions or providing testimony tonight?
I am just gonna be asking questions.
Okay. Then you can proceed.
Why did you all of a sudden change the rules of this hearing?
Can you just state your name for the record?
Oh, yes, Frank Sacamandee, 17 Lee Terrace.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Your time is beginning now.
Why did you all of a sudden change the rules for this hearing? Why are you requiring residents be sworn in prior to making a comment? Are you, are you guys gonna answer questions at the end?
Correct. I read that at the beginning. I'm sorry if you did miss that. We were allowing everybody to ask questions and provide commentary.
How many other times have you required residents to be sworn in before making a public comment during a planning board meeting? How many total new housing units can be created by all of these overlay zones? And how many of them are affordable? How is this calculated? If this wasn't calculated, why wasn't it calculated? If it was calculated, why was the data not disclosed? The public. McManus, you have served as the special master in many fair share housing arbitration proceedings. Is it typical that the residents of a town are not told the contents of a settlement agreement before it is voted on? Buzak, did you lie or mislead the township in any way when you incorrectly stated that the contents of the settlement agreement were to remain confidential before it was approved? If the township residents were able to comment on the settlement prior to the signing of the settlement, would the end result have been different? Have any of the members of the planning board been pressured or coerced by Ed Buzak to try and change their vote? Have any members of the township committee tried to pressure or coerce the planning board members to change their vote? Were the planning board members told that bad things would happen to the town if they didn't change their vote? Is the planning board aware that they don't actually need to approve these ordinances? Because the township committee can override them. So those are my questions.
Okay, thank you for your questions. We will respond. I think we have another other hands raised, Eileen to bring in. Eileen, there's, it's not working on your end?
I can't, I'm trying to get wean over, but it's not, um.
I can't, I'm trying to get Lena over, but it's not, I've done it twice. It's just not. No, she's not at her.
Okay.
Okay, I brought Jerry Kong over. For some reason, Lena, I will try her once Mr. Kong is done, but I can't, she's not coming over.
Okay, okay, so Jerry Kong, you are with us, and I just wanted to ask if you're asking questions or providing testimony tonight?
I just have two questions.
Okay, you can state your name and then begin.
My name is Jerry Kong. I live at 17 Lee Terrace. So as part of our unmet need, we're putting in a 100% affordable housing development. And one of the overlay zones has a density of up to 40 units an acre. So I'm just curious if there are any other towns' settlement agreements that have either 100% affordable housing developments used as a mechanism to satisfy their unmet need? Or if there are any other towns that have densities as high as 40 units an acre to also satisfy, in an overlay zone to help satisfy the unmet need? I, the background there is I, I have, I was looking at a couple other towns, and I never saw anything more than 25. So I'm just curious there. And my second question is, is the affordable housing obligation in a municipality site specific? That is, if one unit is built in, say, B2 Milburn Ave., and another unit is built in the B4 downtown area, are those two units considered equivalent from a constitutional obligation point of view? Those are my two questions.
Okay, thank you. So Eileen, again, try to bring over Lena and Lena E. That's how your name appears. If you are seeing, when Eileen does it, it usually a pop-up will come and say, would you like to join? And you would have to click Join as Panelist. So if you're seeing that pop up on either your phone or machine, go ahead and click yes to permit you to come in. And Eileen, I don't know if you can move people who have done speaking out to attendee mode. Thanks. Just wanna make sure we can get you in here. Okay, if that doesn't seem to be working, maybe go down to the next name on the list. A few hands raised. Okay, Jean Pasternak, you should be with us. You should be able to unmute and.
Hi there.
Just, just wanted to ask if you're asking questions or providing testimony. Okay, great.
Jean Pasternak, 342 Hobart Avenue. My questions are, could the board secretary and attorney confirm whether my letter and other letters that were sent by residents to the planning board members were actually sent to them prior to meeting in June? When this issue and topic was on the agenda? I'd like to understand whether that was done because I outlined my grave concerns about the fair share settlement being approved by the planning board. And I would really like to know whether my letter actually was sent and put, put forward as it legally should have been. My second question is, are you aware that there are 1,700 signatures on a townwide circulated petition? Asking for a pause for any approval of the DPW project? So that the considerations on the toxicity and other issues, meaning it being a completely income segregated project, could be reconsidered and discussed with residents to see if there are alternatives? I'd like to know whether you have considered the input from close to probably 100 people who spoke up at township committee meetings, planning board meetings, and in written form since around April of this year, citing their grave concerns about the fair share housing settlement agreement as negotiated? No one that I'm aware of ever spoke out against our constitutional obligation, but all spoke against the poorly negotiated deal by Ms. McManus, Mr. Buzak, Ms. Mickens, and Mr. Wasserman. So my question is, are you aware of those comments? And are you considering them this evening in your vote, before you vote? Next question. Do you believe that it is appropriate for the same vote to be taken this evening on the same issue that you already have turned down? Do you think it's ethical, proper, or correct that you're doing this? Are you aware that there could be up to a 70% increase in the population of Milburn Township if all of the fair share housing elements in the fair share settlement agreement overlays, projects, et cetera, are implemented? And how do you believe this will impact the town? And can you, in good conscience, make any approvals to allow this to happen to Milburn Short Hills? I'd like to also ask Ms. McManus, what the typical percent of satisfaction of unmet need is for most other settlement agreements? And I'd like to ask Ms. McManus if satisfying 70% of our unmet need is typical of other settlement agreements? And could she cite another example where that is the case, anywhere in the state of New Jersey, particularly in a suburb with the same similar demographics as Milburn Short Hills? I'd like to also ask, why do you believe that leaving out the B3 zone was discriminatory? And was the B4 or O or 1 zone included? And why was, wasn't it, and why wasn't the B3 zone included?
Fifteen seconds remaining.
Sure. I'd like to follow on from Ms. Urso and have her questions answered. Mr. Buzak, could you tell us what townships you have allowed disclosure of settlement agreement terms before the council or equivalent of township committee members voted on that? And why did that town get an allowance to do that at your recommendation, but not here in Milburn?
That's time.
I just have one more. And why?
I'm sorry, we lost you? Ms. Pasternak? Are you guys hearing me?
We are.
Okay. Ms. Pasternak, we're not hearing you anymore. Jean, I just want to make sure if you are still there. You were past time, but you did say you had one more question. I heard that. And then now I'm not hearing you anymore. And you're not muted. I'm not sure what's, what's going on with your audio. Okay, in the interest of time, why don't we bring over our next? And if Ms. Pasternak is able to rejoin at the end, if we have a final question.
I'm trying to bring Lena over.
Okay. Lena E., if you are seeing a pop-up on your screen, or maybe, maybe you've got hidden behind another window, maybe just check around in the Zoom to see if there's a Join as a Panelist button that you can select. Okay, doesn't seem to be working. We can go on to the next commenter. Lena, if you're able to hear, you may want to log out and log back in. Perhaps something is strange with your connection if you still want to make the comment. We have our questions. We'd be happy to have you in. Okay, someone named April, you should be in.
Hi, I'm a resident. Just have a quick question.
Okay, a question, not a testimony for tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
South Mountain area into Toorridge Woodrow. My question is, on 9 Main Street, this site has been approved for 100% affordable housing. Is that like a done deal or can be renegotiated? And that, like, be changed to 20%? Any possibility? And the second thing is, if we don't have this 100% affordable housing does that mean Milburn Township will lose the immunity? Yeah, that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. I captured those questions. Thank you. And Jean, I think we have you back in. You should be able to unmute. And let's see if we can hear you on the final question you had, Ms. Pasternak. Great.
Hi. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Yeah, my, my last question really was, let me just get it back here. What I wanted to know is, why was the density in the C-zone higher? Why wasn't it not higher? Either way, you want to answer it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming back. I don't know what happened, but glad we got the last one.
I think it's my fault. Thank you very much.
No worries. Okay. Great. Our next member of the public.
David Morrow should be coming over.
Okay, David Morrow, good evening. I should be able to unmute.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Are you asking questions or providing testimony tonight?
I have one question for the board in general. David Morrow, One Abbey Terrace, Milburn Township. I would just like to know if each of the board members are aware that pursuant to page 18 of the settlement agreement, this fair share housing center settlement agreement can be amended? That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Stephen. Okay, we can bring in our next. Member of the public.
Okay, I'm bringing over Lena, Leah Cruz, I think the name is. Leah Cruz, yeah.
I apologize. I think I hit the wrong button. I was supposed to join as attendee.
Yes, we are, we are hearing you. Yes.
Okay. Anyway, my name is Leah Cruz. I live at 39 Whitney Road in Short Hills. I just have one question. And I apologize if this was asked and/or answered prior to this evening, or even earlier this evening. I have read the memo from Frank Banish dated February 1, 2022 regarding confidentiality. And while I realize there's a claim that the contents of the negotiations are confidential, although that's disputed, I'd like to know the participants in the settlement negotiations because clearly that is not confidential. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Lena, one more time? I'm just, for some reason, Lena just does not want to come over.
Okay.
Perhaps she can give a phone number, and Lena can call on a landline?
Sure, the phone number is listed in, on the agenda. So that's a good place to.
Say it instead of pulling up the agenda, just maybe say it'd be easier.
Okay, let me pull it up then. Okay, I see. I will read out the phone number. I see multiple, but I will read the, the first one I see. 312-626-6799. I'll say it one more time. If Lena wanted to call in, the number is 312-626-6799. And then there's gonna ask for a passcode or a meeting ID. I will give you that. Pound, I'll read that again. 929-218-63343 pound. And after waiting one last time, the passcode is 501991. Passcode 501991. Again, this is on the agenda, which might have been easier than me reading all that out. But feel free to call in if you're having trouble with mute, with Zoom. Okay, sorry for that delay. Next member.
Carrie Strasburg.
Okay. Great, Carrie Strasburg, you're, you're in the meeting. You should be able to unmute. Carrie Strasburg, if you're here, you can unmute.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Are you going?
Are you going?
Would you be asking questions or providing testimony?
I had three quick questions. It was two and a half, but then while I was waiting, I think it became three. So my first question is just a clarification. If you know more than I do and are allowed to say, members of the TC have been somewhat contradictory in talking about the density in the overlay zones. And possibly in the same paragraph or sentence have said both that the densities were not negotiable, that they were given to them by fair share, and that those densities were not negotiable when they were asked questions from residents about the disparity amongst the densities in different parts of town. They said that those densities were not negotiable. They were given to them by fair share housing. But then they've also said that the people in the room were able to negotiate a much better deal for our town than perhaps others could have. So that seems contradictory to me, and I'm just wondering if, if you or our attorney can clarify that. My second question is regarding what's been threatened, that fair share housing and a judge could appoint someone to take over, you know, our town zoning committee and make all the decisions. And I guess my question is, hasn't that kind of already happened? And I would love it if other, you know, members of this committee could, you know, could opine on that because it feels like we already have lost control of a lot of things. And then my final question is, would it be under the purview of your committee to suggest studies that should be done since the township committee has not undertaken any of those studies over these last couple of years, including people who are currently on the TC now, who were making those criticisms regarding the Silverman Project when they were not yet on the TC? So those are my three questions, and I thank you for all the work that you're doing for our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next member of the public.
David Cosgrove.
David Cosgrove, you should be in and able to unmute yourself.
Can you folks hear me?
We can.
Okay, excellent.
Asking questions or providing testimony tonight?
Questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So it's really three questions or one with two subparts. And the, the question is, did the planning board know the terms of the settlement before the TC agreed to the terms? And if so, when? And if not, why not? Thank you. That's it.
Okay, that was a question within a question. Thank you, as, as advertised. Yeah, no, that's good.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it, folks.
Okay. It looks like just Lena E. continues to have the hand raised and hasn't found another way to, to join the meeting or rejoin. So I see another hand, except that somebody who has spoken already. Okay. Anybody who has not yet had their opportunity to make statements or ask questions, members of the public who would like to. Okay. Okay. Hearing none at this time, we'll close the public question and comment session. And a number of questions that I jotted down. I guess I would first turn to counsel. Ed, I don't know if there are any questions that you wanted to begin that were addressed to you or that you would like to speak to initially to either clarify or respond to. And then I'll move to Beth McManus. I know there are a number of questions directed at you. And then going through that, I would like to just kind of go through and address any remaining outstanding questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, the hearing tonight is on the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. It's not on the settlement agreement. It's not on the terms of the settlement agreement. So many of the questions that were directed and perhaps that were directed at me relate to the settlement agreement, and that's not what's before the, the meeting for tonight. It's the Housing Element Fair Share Plan that's there. So with that caveat, let me go through my notes here and answer the questions or respond to the questions to which I can respond. There was a, there was a a statement that the methodology, or at least an implication, and Beth McManus can also comment on this, that the methodology for establishing our RDP, that is the vacant land analysis that was utilized, was a methodology that was provided by Fair Share Housing Center. That, that is untrue. The methodology that was utilized and has been utilized in Milburn and in all other municipalities is a methodology that is set forth in the second round co-rules.
Great. Ed, would you also mind addressing, I guess, proceedings at our meetings and the fact that we do swear in people who provide testimony and that being a traditional aspect of our meetings?
Yes, that is what we do when people provide testimony. So we did not do it last time. That resulted in a number of statements that were unsupported. There was no, no basis for statements that were being made. And having people sworn in makes them accountable for what they say in terms of facts, not in terms of opinion. They can have whatever opinions they, they want to have. But in terms of facts, they are now under oath and have to set forth facts and not, not speculation. There's a question on how, how does the planning board make a determination on nine Main Street, the 100% affordable site without having the environmental reports? Again, the, the nine Main Street site is part of the settlement agreement. And I think as Ms. McManus pointed out, one of the major revisions or clarifications in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan was to provide and emphasize that this site will only be utilized for residential purposes if it is remediated to residential standards. If it is not remediated to residential standards, then obviously it cannot be utilized for residential purposes. Those standards are not set by the township. The township cannot make a determination that a site that's otherwise contaminated can simply be utilized for residential purposes and non-residential purposes. All of that has been preempted by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. They control whether or not a site can or cannot be utilized environmentally for residential purposes. So therefore, the clarification was made by Ms. McManus of that point in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. We can't discuss what happened at the closed session on June 15th, whenever we had that meeting. I've talked about the, why residents are being sworn in. Question was asked, how many housing units, had the number of new housing units been calculated and has the number of affordable units created as a result of those inclusionary developments or non-inclusionary developments, just 100% affordable and calculated? Yes, they have. I don't have the number, but the numbers are all set forth in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. And, and you know, anyone can just add them up and figure out what the numbers are. Questions about whether members of the board were coerced by me? Those who are not relevant to the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. How many other towns have had 100% affordable projects to satisfy unmet need? I don't, I don't know the number. I know there are other towns. And I know there are other towns that are negotiating that, but I, I don't know the number. Have any other towns utilized 40 dwelling units per acre to satisfy unmet need? Again, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Beth may have a better handle on that. I can't answer that question. Are affordable housing units in different zones being given different equivalent credits? You know, does a, does a affordable housing unit in 100% affordable project get more credit or less credit than one that's in an inclusionary development or an inclusionary development in, or one zone? Is that treated differently than inclusionary development, CMO zone? The answer to that is no. All the affordable housing units are given equal credit. There are bonus credits that are given depending upon the tenure of the, of the unit. As, as Ms. McManus pointed out, we, we, the township typically benefits of the maximum number of bonus credits that we could get.
Ed, I do just want to make one clarification. You, you didn't comment on whether you had coerced. The definition of coerc is to persuade somebody using force or threats. That, that has not happened in my observation as Chair of this board.
Thank you. With regard to the question, and it was posed in, not exactly in this way, but whether or not the board can vote again on the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. The, the fact is legally, this act is, is effectively a legislative act that the board undertakes. There's no, what's known as race judicata that you have in judicial proceedings where if a determination is made, it, you can't put the same question before a board. For example, in the board's experience this, at least some of the members have experienced this, where an applicant gets denied an application and then comes back before the board. They can't come back with the same application and get a second bite at the apple or a third bite at the apple or a fourth bite at the apple. That, that concept does not apply when the board is taking legislative action likewise with the municipality. The municipality can consider an ordinance, defeated ordinance, and it can come up next meeting. Come up. There was a question as to whether the nine Main Street site was, I think it was phrased, a done deal. I don't think that, again, I don't want to comment on the settlement agreement. It is in the settlement agreement. It is in our Housing Element Fair Share Plan, which is consistent with the settlement agreement. Question was asked whether or not the township loses immunity if there's no 100% affordable project. Again, that doesn't relate to the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. So that's not really the subject matter of this hearing. I, I don't have a list. Again, the question was asked regarding the negotiation of the settlement agreement. That is not the subject matter of the proceeding tonight, which is the Housing Element Fair Share Plan, not the settlement agreement. Why that settlement agreement came into being. The densities that are set forth in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan, and indeed the identification of the sites and the contents of the satisfaction of the township's obligation is, is drawn by, or drawn to the settlement agreement, as I mentioned at the outset, in answer to Mr. Bear's question, Member Bear's question. Is there, is there a threat that fair share and the judge will take over zoning? I assume the rest of that question was if the planning board does not adopt the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. And the comment was, haven't they already done that? The, the answer to that, first part of that question is that a motion has been filed by Fair Share Housing Center to strip the planning board of jurisdiction over affordable housing projects and to, in lieu of the planning board, have the court appoint a special hearing officer who will hear applications for affordable housing projects. Those hearings would be held in the courthouse in Essex County in Newark, not in the township, and would not be held in the evening, would be held during the day. That is the relief that, one of the prongs of relief that fair share has included in its motion to enforce litigants' rights, which is to enforce the settlement agreement. Did the planning board know of the settlement agreement before the township committee approved it? I can't, I guess I can't speak for the planning board or whether the planning board knew or didn't know. The planning board was not a participant in the determinations of the settlement agreement. There were. I know you, Madam Chair, was on an early version, so to speak, of the negotiating committee at one point in time. But I believe that you dropped off that sometime in 2021. You may know better than I, but you were not, you were certainly not on toward the end of the discussions that, that we had.
That's correct. I didn't participate in 2020 or 2021.
Okay. Those are the questions that I noted down that I am, I think I'm able to answer. I had been able to answer. So let me pass it back to you, Madam Chair, and perhaps Ms. McManus can do hers.
Thank you. Yes. Beth, I would turn it over to you. As I'm going down my list, it looks like Ed answered many from, from the beginning through the end, but I think there are still a couple holes in there. If you'd mind kind of going back over and answering from your notes.
Yeah, I will. I'll do so. Let me just. One of the questions was, and I happen to have this first on my notes, although I think it was a later question, asking about similar settlements in terms of the unmet need, talking about density and the presence of 100% affordable housing site within our unmet need mechanisms. And I don't have a full comparison of all the towns I'm familiar with prepared, but I, but I did think of two examples that show that Milburn's unmet need strategies are not so unusual. The first one is West Orange. I see that they have, or I know that they have a 100% affordable housing site as part of their unmet need. And then also Township of South Orange Village, they have a handful of unmet need mechanisms that have higher densities, including, I think they've got three sites that are over 40 units an acre. Another one that, that is in the twenties and another two that are in the thirties, as in thirty-something units an acre. I'm sorry, I don't recall the, the details, but I thought that those are two not too distant examples of towns that have comparable strategies as far as their unmet need. Some of the other example, or excuse me, other questions that were asked. This first item that I do want to address, I don't think it's actually about the housing element, but I think it, I'm going to use it just to highlight one thing. For folks, there was a question about whether or not the planning board is satisfied that all of the other documents required for compliance have been completed by me with a reference to Frank Banish's or Special Masters list of required documents. And I, I wanted to bring this up because what's actually before the planning board this evening is simply adoption of the housing plan. That determination is what is, is simply what the court must do, what Frank Banish will, will review. And so the planning board purposely doesn't have all of the documents. There are deed restrictions and copies of ordinances, many of which were adopted last night that will also be submitted to the court. But that's not part of that, part of the master plan elements, which all of you are being asked to consider and potentially adopt tonight. Instead, your role is, is just one piece of these implementing documents that Frank Banish had listed as being required. And that piece is, I think, obviously, the adoption of the housing element itself. Let's see, some of these other questions. I think Ed did a really good job of answering most of these, although, Madam Chair, if you think I've overlooked one that you'd like my input on, I'm happy to, to answer that. Let's see. And there was a question also in regards to the unmet need. Once again, is there a typical unmet need percentage that's done, like a percent, I'm not sure whether it's a percentage of the obligation or a percentage of population growth in the municipality that would occur as a result of the unmet need? But in either case, there's no typical. There's, and as I had said before, if there was this black and white standard that I could point to, I think my job would be a little bit easier. But instead, the, the extent of unmet need imposed, or the, the extent of unmet need mechanisms imposed upon a municipality are really a function of the opportunities that exist in the municipality as well as, you know, the, the need for affordable housing in that community, the need both in terms of its obligation as well as the, the prevalence of affordable housing that exists at that time. So there's no typical percentage. Instead, it's really a function of the characteristics of that particular town. And then I think those are all the questions I can answer. I think the rest of the items that were unanswered largely about the settlement agreement itself or the negotiations. But as I said, I'm happy to have something pointed out that you'd like me to address.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for responding to those. I'm just giving one last glance. I think we got to all questions addressing tonight's fair share housing element of the master plan. Graham, I just wanted to ask if, or see if I can ask with you. There was a discussion of or a point brought up by Ms. Pasternak that, that if everything were to be built, which, which we know it's, that is not what we're kind of discussing tonight, but there was a claim made that it would be a 70% increase in population. My understanding of, from my practice as a planner is that we don't know how many people would live in any units. We couldn't say what, what something might do or add a, prescribe a specific percentage of population increase. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's difficult to assign a uniformity to, you know, anticipated population growth, given that we don't know quite yet what the unit mix breakdown would be. Typically, household sizes vary by bedroom mix. And, you know, particularly on the market rate side, we don't know exactly what the configuration would be to anticipate, you know, a true. particularly on the market rate side, we don't know exactly what the configuration would be, uh, to anticipate, uh, you know, a true population increase with respect to this. Of course, market forces and other, uh, related, uh, you know, barriers will, you know, prevent, uh, you know, immediate development of these, uh, projects.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, uh, one other question, um, Mr. Morrow asked for members of the planning board if we were aware of, a sort of a specific item in the settlement agreement regarding, um, being amended. Again, that, that is helpful and thank you for bringing that up, but, um, it's not, uh, as pertinent to the discussion or at all pertinent to the discussion of the, the element of the uh, master plan that we're looking at tonight, but that is, um, sort of a good nugget to emerge. So thank you for raising that, um, though I don't think we need, everybody doesn't need to come off mute and respond on that one. Um, I think that was it. Um, other, any other reactions or allow the, the members of the planning board, if, if I'm missing something or there was a question that you had wanted to, um, hear an answer that we should either just repeat, uh, that you didn't hear.
Um, maybe you could just help me out. So is tonight's vote different than the vote several weeks ago that it was voted unanimously inconsistent? Are we no longer concerned with consistency to the master plan?
So I'll, I'll give my answer and then I'll ask, uh, Ed to confirm, but my understanding is that the votes when we were talking about consistency with the master plan were with respect to the ordinances. There were four ordinances that, well, there were multiple that night, but four relating to this. So those ordinances we voted as not consistent because our master plan had not been adopted and, and that's what tonight is the master plan. Element.
And I don't know if it was you or Ed who said Frank Banish put in the settlement that the planning board must adopt?
I did not state that. I, I didn't state anything about Mr.
Somebody said Frank Banish put in the settlement agreement that the planning board must adopt this settlement agreement? It's in the
I don't know that he did it, but the settlement agreement, I believe, does prescribe that to be, to be compliant. Ed, I guess I would just turn to you to make sure I'm not misstating anything legal.
I think the comment, uh, was really Beth's comment in response to the, uh, quote checklist, unquote, uh, that, uh, was required in the, uh, Special Masters report that was part of the record at the fairness hearing. I believe in Beth, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think you, you said, and I think you're accurately said.
Can you just clarify which Beth you're speaking to?
I'm, I'm sorry, Beth McManus. Thank you. Oh, uh, yes. Uh, I think that Beth McManus, uh, correctly stated that in the report that Frank Banish filed with the court, uh, one of the items that was included in the quote checklist of, of items was the housing element and fair share plan.
Yeah, that is, that's correct. Sorry, I didn't, I, I had trouble understanding the question. Yeah, Frank did reference that in his report and, and also for the board's edifications also referenced in the settlement agreement with fair share. It's paragraph, uh, 18 at a minimum. It requires, uh, that the, the housing plan be adopted and then later endorsed.
So, okay. So even though all the overlay zones were deemed inconsistent and last night, three members of the township voted for them anyway. If we're voting for the entire, to this evening now, we're voting to adopt the entitled tire settlement agreement. We're just not concerned with those. Beth, I'm, I'm asking, I don't understand. I want to know what I am expected to vote on tonight. I think that's fair.
Yeah. What is before you this evening is a draft housing plan for adoption. Should the planning board choose to adopt this housing plan, you'll be doing two things. One, just, uh, as a function of the vote, you'll be, uh, adopting a new element to your master plan. So this housing element is just like your land use element, your circulation element, et cetera. It's simply one chapter, if you will, of your master plan. This one happens to address affordable housing. The other thing that you'll be doing is taking an implementation step for the settlement agreement that was executed in 2021 and then, um, approved by the court. So one, you're just simply creating a new element of your master plan. But by doing so, you're taking one of the major steps to, toward implementing that settlement agreement. And, and of, I think by virtue of that is taking another major step towards getting that judgment of proposed, maintaining immunity, et cetera.
Okay, but the overlays are in the housing settlement plan, correct?
The overlays are referenced in your settlement agreements. Yes. And in the housing plan.
Okay, um, and so no coercion, but the planning board in essence really is supposed to adopt this.
Yes, it's a necessary implementation step from the settlement agreement. Just, and, and just so, so Melbourne knows this is the same in every, literally every community across the state.
Right. So it, in, in the, you really don't have freedom of choice here because
because we're acting in accordance with our township committees.
So it doesn't really matter if, how you really feel about it is what I'm trying to get across here.
I think, I, I think that's the case for us as planning board members, whether or not we, we feel something or like something. Our charge is to evaluate it in the context in which it is, whether that's an application in context of our underlying zoning or, uh, or a, a fair share housing element in context of a settlement agreement. It's, it's not whether we like how it's going to look. It's, it's whether it's permitted or, you know, or, or something that would be approved. I don't know. Ed, is that an accurate statement?
I, I have nothing to add to what you just said.
Okay, so you know where I'm going with this. I don't have to repeat it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the board, uh, had any, uh, questions that had asked that they wanted to echo or, or didn't hear the response or have any guests on? Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not, uh, trying to delay this conversation, but I'm having a hard time figuring out exactly what we're, we're voting on because it was just said that it doesn't really matter what we think. But then what, what are we, what are we voting against? Are we comparing it to the master plan? Consistencies with the ordinances that are referenced, like what, what are we voting on? I know, I know, we're going to say yes, and it's going to become an element in the master plan, but I don't know what I'm saying yes to. I'm really having a hard time with that. Can, can anybody help with that, please?
Let me take another shot at it. And then if it doesn't work, I'll turn to somebody else that can maybe do better. So this is not a vote about consistency, like you had done about the ordinances. And let me be clear about that because it's been referenced a couple of times. When you did the ordinances, your, your charge was, are these ordinances consistent or inconsistent with the master plan and, and why? This is, we know that this is inconsistent with your master plan, right? Because we're, we're creating new policies as a result of adoption of the housing plan. We're replacing previous housing plan, we're changing zoning that's set forth in your, in your land use plan. So it's not a matter of consistency because we, just by its very nature, we know there are inconsistencies. Instead, the, a vote in favor of adopting the housing plan is just simply that you are voting to add this, this draft document to your master plan. That's very simply all it is. It becomes a new chapter, if you will, of your master plan that includes all of your various elements. Now you have a new housing, housing plan element or a new chapter. I'm using, uh, is, is an alternative word. But my hope
With that one right there, why am I adding it?
Okay. What's that?
Why am I adding it?
You're adding it be, because in order to continue on this path towards maintaining, now maintaining immunity from builder's remedy litigation, the, the township as a whole is required to implement the settlement agreement that it executed in 2021. That settlement agreement and getting there was a lot of work. It was difficult, but it is simply not the end of the process. Once a municipality executes their settlement agreements, Fair Share Housing Center, they are then required to do all of the implementation work. And it generally includes just a couple of categories with the two big ones being adoption of ordinances for which you guys have done most of that work just last night at the governing body level. But then it's also adopting the new master plan element that, uh, essentially expands upon what's included in the settlement agreement. Provides some additional detail, but then importantly incorporates the policies and the decisions into that settlement agreement into the municipality's body of land use policy. And that is the master plan itself. And so an adoption of this master plan will further will implement a major component of the settlement agreement just by simply adopting the plan. And it will also incorporate the policy set forth in that settlement agreement into your master plan as a whole and your land use policies as a whole.
Thank you.
Okay. So just to clarify, Beth, even if we're being told we have to vote for this, it will be implemented and incorporated into our land use policy, even though you just reiterated it is inconsistent. Yet we are to put this in the forever master plan for Melbourne Township.
I, I would also just add before Beth responds, anytime you're going to change your master plan, however that is, it's going to be inconsistent with whatever the plan was before. Just that's anytime you're going to change something, it's going to be different than what it was. But Beth, go ahead.
Yeah, there's really no way to avoid that unless the municipality, we're going to embark on a comprehensive master plan all at once. That would also include the housing plan, but that is frankly, not the process that I'm, that I think any municipality has followed. And so by its very nature, every time a municipality, nearly every time a municipality adopts its housing plan, whether it's part of this post 2015 process or part of the earlier COA third round processes or the, the COA, um, prior round process. By its very nature, the town is creating a master plan policy that has some inconsistencies with its existing master plan because you're creating strategies to fulfill its affordable housing obligation, which are by and large zoning strategies that didn't previously exist.
Of course, and we still don't know where those numbers came from. I'm just going to put that back out there. We don't know where those, these numbers came from. And I know who's on the subcommittee and I believe Leah Cruz asked that that is not confidential. Who was in the negotiating room? So maybe you could answer that for her.
So, um, yeah, there was a subcommittee, uh, I can only speak to who was involved in late 2021 when I was involved, uh, and I worked with, uh, Mr. Buzek, of course. And two council, uh, township committee members, Maggie Miggins, Richard Watson, and of course, uh, Alex McDonald was involved as the business manager for the township.
Uh, and also the, the township attorney was involved in many of those.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kit Falcon too. Yeah, thank you, Ed.
Okay. Other questions regarding the, the housing element? Or any items to review?
Can I ask one more? I'm going to regret it if I don't. No, and the ordinances that were approved last night, I think I brought this up at, uh, when we, uh, sent them back actually. Uh, but it, it says additionally, the affordable units shall be integrated with the market. Right? Market rate units, uh, in buildings with multiple dwelling units. We're going to now adopt a, this fair share housing element that is going to directly conflict with this though. Because we're going to adopt an L, uh, an element that has, um, provisions that have not been organized in ordinance that are going to develop a completely segregated housing unit. And this is where I'm really stuck on this, you know, because I, I feel like that is going to be detrimental to not only the residents that are there, you know, but it's, it's, yeah, I guess that's where my big one is. I feel for whoever is going to live there because they are going to be segregated. And we put in all of our other ordinances that just passed that we're also adopting with this fair share housing element into our master plan that they can't be segregated out. And I, I think that's where, yeah, I'm, I'm hung up. I feel like it's going to do detriment to the community. If we do have this pass and I don't know, like, I don't know what else to do. Can, can somebody address that for me or at least make me feel better about it?
Uh, I can take a stab at it. So, um, one, I, I want to address the more specific concerns, but just so, um, just so it's clear, what Melbourne is proposing is not unusual. The fact that you have inclusionary housing sites that require proper or good integration of the affordable units with the market units, while, while also having a 100% affordable housing project is, is just simply not unusual. I don't think it's contradictory at all. In fact, 100% affordable housing projects, they really play, uh, an important role in communities. So they do a couple of things. First, they provide, uh, a great way to get a significant number of housing units in a community that otherwise don't exist and to be able to do so quickly. With the, the 75 units for the site, this means that, um, that we can have those 75 units created in, in just a couple of years after the settlement agreement was executed as opposed to many of the other unmet need mechanisms where we don't know to what extent developers and property owners will take advantage of the zoning. It could, and, and frankly, I think it's going to take years and perhaps decades for a lot of these sites subject to the overlay zones to be redeveloped. But you get an immediate benefit for those households that are without, uh, housing that is affordable to them with a 100% affordable housing site because the timing is such that the municipality's control and the municipality is responsible for facilitating the quick production of those units. So that's, that's one benefit. Another benefit of 100% affordable housing sites are that there are typically housing services and housing counseling services available to the residents. So when inclusionary housing developers construct housing, uh, all of the, the big national developers that we think of, I don't want to name names because it's, I'm not, uh, I, I'm not suggesting anything negative about them, but they are not in the business of providing counseling to low and moderate income households. They are simply in the business of building housing and building within reason as much housing as possible. In order to do so, they have to provide inclusionary, they have to provide affordable units. But with 100% affordable housing, we're able to couple not just the, the needed housing for those residents, but the developers are providing housing counseling services and some support services to the residents there. And so it in part feels a little bit different of a, or an expanded role in the community. It's not just the housing, it's the housing plus the services. And then the other thing I wanted to say is 100% affordable housing is not, is not this terrible economic segregation that I think people fear it is. Uh, it's not in and of itself stigmatized in a community unless other people choose to stigmatize the housing units and the residents that live there. And what we have here is a building that's being planned right now at the nine main site is a building that's being planned that I think is going to be, uh, that through the developers work with the township professionals, the work it's done in, uh, in the township as a whole, will produce a building that is really nice looking, that is quality design, quality living experience and is something that is going to, uh, blend into the community such that it's not the eyesore. It's not the building that people drive by and look at and say, well, that's the affordable building. That's where the, you know, the poor people live. That's not the case here. Instead, we're working with a quality developer that will build a quality project that just happens to be occupied by folks whose incomes are at 80% or less than median income. So I, I hope those are a couple of things to, to make you feel a little better about the 100% affordable.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not worried about what the building looks like, but I'm worried about those. We have that part of this fair share housing element that we're going to put in. And then the ordinances that are the other part of it, right? Have this thing where it says again, additionally, the affordable units shall be integrated with market, market reunions. Why do we have to have that in there? If you think there's not going to be any stigma with it or anything else, like I don't understand why that is in the ordinance.
Well, I mean, I think there's a difference, you know, when we, when we think about this building, I would say this is not a, this is not a site that's isolated from the rest of the community. In fact, this is right in the middle of the downtown, proximate to a school, proximate to train station, proximate to residential neighborhoods. And so it's not, it's not an isolated community, uh, isolated building that I think is going to stick out. For the inclusionary developments, I have to say, I think it's really important that developers integrate their market rate, excuse me, integrate their affordable units in the site. Cause you know, as I talked about, there's sort of two different, two different roles that these types of affordable housing can play, the inclusionary housing versus the 100% affordable housing. The inclusionary housing, I think the purpose of that in part, um, is to provide this seamless integration of affordable housing units. And it's important, and in that role, the purpose is to fully integrate the, the residents who are at 50 or 70% of median income with, uh, the market rate households in the community. And one of the things that I think that the ordinance standard avoids or, um, prohibits is developers, market rate developers that might seek prohibits is developers, market rate developers that might seek to take advantage of a town that doesn't have that requirement and and put all of the affordable housing units in buildings or a portion of the building that has lesser architectural detail, lesser site design details, lesser building finishes. And so by requiring the integration, you're also combating that, you're making sure not only are you requiring just simply integration of the housing and the house households within the site and within the building, but you're also taking a major step to make sure that the units themselves are indistinguishable from the market rate units in the property.
I get it. Yeah, I sort of, I still disagree, though, like it's it's no, I, yeah, I have a hard time with it, and I know a lot of the other townspeople as well. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gaston.
I I do have one last comment to that, what you're saying, Beth. You came on, and that's when our former planner of many years left. And I can tell you because I was on the subcommittees before this group, we were always advised to never do 100% affordable, and we were advised you never get the township in the business of housing. So this has gone against all the advice we've ever gotten, and now Milburn Township is actual municipality, it's going to cost money, you even said. We are now in the business of housing. So I just want to put that on the record because I do have some context to go back to.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, that said, so at this point, we'd be making a motion to approve the housing element of the fair share. Fair share. I'm, why am I blanking on the title of the element? Sorry.
Yeah, having on a fair share plan.
Thank you. I have too many acronyms written down. Thank you. We'd be voting to for the for the third round, as was from the July eighth distribution. So I will make a motion to approve. Sorry, go ahead, Ed.
I'm sorry, I had distributed to the to the board a revised resolution adopting the housing element and fair share plan. You will recall that at the last meeting, the resolution was done late and the board, the board had it late. And I read it into the record. It was subsequently distributed to the board. I made certain amendments to it, which were blacklined. And just essentially, the amendment amendments that I made, just obviously the date change in the in the data of the plan from what it was before made reference to the 2018 master plan reexamination update. I had not, I neglected to put that in the original resolution that I had provided. And since that 2018 update, then not the housing element fair share plan part, but the the actual master plan part, I thought it was important to put it in the resolution to to have reference to it. And I think the only other change I made was to to say in one of the whereas clauses, as suggested by one of the board members, that the adoption implementation of the 2022 housing element fair share plan is in the public interest. It fulfills the constitutional obligation of the township of Milburn to provide a realistic opportunity for the construction of its fair share of the region's lower margin income housing needs. Those are the two changes. Again, that was distributed a week and a half ago or so to the board members. I'm sure everyone has it. But that that should be the document that someone should be moving, and I guess you began to move, make a motion, would be a motion to adopt that resolution.
Great, I will thank, Trini, are you raising your hand or you're okay? Okay, great. Just want to make sure we didn't miss anything. Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Dan's raising his hand.
Hey, thank you. I didn't see. Mr. Bear. You're muted.
How about now?
That's good.
Okay, thank you. Diane, thank you. Just want to make it clear, much like the action that was taken previously on the ordinances, which were overridden by the township committee, any decision tonight made by this planning board can as well be overridden by or changed by the township committee. This is questioned to Mr. Bouzak.
Well, I I think your point is well made, that is, any ordinance, as those overlay ordinances that were adopted last night by the township committee, ultimately do not have to be consistent with the old master plan or the whole housing element fair share plan or the new housing element fair share plan. So in in any case, land use ordinances can be adopted by a municipality that are inconsistent with any master plan or any element of the master plan, provided that, as was as was done last night, a resolution is adopted to express the reasons why the municipality is acting inconsistent with the master plan, whatever it may be.
So if you don't get a majority tonight, it still gets bounced back to the TC at the August meeting, and they can still override tonight's same thing and have whereas clauses resolution written by you, and it would still wind up in the master plan incorporated.
No.
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 So if you don't get a majority vote tonight, what happens?
You don't have a housing, you don't have a new housing element and fair share plan of your master plan. As as Beth McManus said, you you don't have a new chapter that is consistent with the settlement agreement and the ordinances that have in fact already been adopted. When pieces don't fit together, that's that's what happens. And as as you also pointed out, one of the checklist items will not be able to be provided to the special master.
And then it fails. It doesn't go back to the TC to override like they did with the inconsistent overlays. I just want to know because I think, you know.
That is correct. Township Committee has nothing to do with the adoption of the housing element fair share plan.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
You're welcome.
Okay, and thank you, Dan, for asking, and so we could clarify that. Okay.
So we need a second, I believe, Madam Chair.
Yes, the motion was to approve the resolution adopting the third round housing element.
That was by you, correct?
Yeah.
Second. Gaston Halbert?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
Sujatha Sean?
No.
Diane Egglow?
No.
Trini BJ?
Yes.
Allison Canfield?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Beth Stoll?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for that. Back to our agenda, that is the only item we had as our business tonight. Mr. Bouzak, any additional items or anything to add before we close out for the evening?
I have nothing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, great, thank you. Our next regular scheduled meeting, Eileen, do you have that date? Our first, we have one meeting, I believe, in August.
Yeah, I think we, I think our August meeting is August third. I don't have it in.
Yes, it is August third.
I don't have any applications scheduled, so unless you have something that comes up that you want to discuss, I have no application, so I have nothing going forward on that.
Okay, we will be in touch regarding the August third meeting and obviously we'll circulate an agenda if if it is used, but we'll hold that time for the time being, and if it's canceled, we'll share notice. With that, I make a motion to adjourn. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Okay, thank you. I'll have a good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good night.